Get it.
They have like a couple of these, you know, you put this up so like they could just bring it up. I don't know what you want to say.
If you can get me nine of them, I'll have them posted at the live.
All right. You are ready. All right, I guess I'll. Yeah, call the meeting to order at five oh four P M for the Portage uh township board. And roll call.
Cheryl's here.
Muhammad's here.
Ryan Hill here. All right, and if you all have a chance to look over the agenda, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion we approve. The agenda dated March eighteen two thousand twenty-five for the township board of Portage Township. Thank Joe Tony Indiana.
Second, all in favor. Hi. That's everyone, yeah.
Sure.
All right, and the approval of the minutes, there were some minor changes I had mentioned to Jason. Uh, just about. Uh.
Tell me again, my dude.
Don't tell me that again.
My dude.
Weird. Who says that? Headband, I guess, isn't it so?
There did that go?
It was a long one. I must turn this on your.
Which one's that? Oh, it's revised, okay.
He's one of you, Edith.
Okay.
Much as a scribble on it right now, that would work too.
Which one?
Yeah, trying to find it. So we uh.
What page?
That one.
This page?
I don't.
What do you want?
He's looking for it.
Oh.
Oh, uh, under other, we number one. Uh, Mr. Hill stated that those who didn't apply for child support or didn't want to made that choice because they left a domestic abuse situation. That was a question, not a statement. I do not know all of the applicants. Um, so that was just the one I wanted to point out that we were kind of looking at, you know, possible reasons for the child support issue being a uh privacy or safety point for people. So just a small edit to that.
Occasionally that, or you just change your.
What do you want to say, Ryan?
Uh.
You've presented. Stated that those who didn't.
Mr. Hill asked if the reason for that might be because um they had left domestic abuse situations or had complications where they were not able to best child support. Think that was any concerns. Any other comments or edits?
Hmm, mine will be too official.
All right, so motion, I move to pass the uh minutes from February eighteenth with that uh amendment. Second, all in favor.
I mean, you want to change something?
No.
Okay, all right, you know, it was.
Special board meeting February twenty-fifth, I'm just now realizing that we did not include the minute here.
I was gonna say.
I didn't have them up, so tabled for March. Asked for a retable.
That was the budget meeting?
Hmm, no, the annual report though.
The annual report, yeah, okay.
So we'll do it.
For the April, April meeting.
Okay.
We'll get tabled that.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to table?
You don't.
Does this have to be referred for undecided fans?
Yeah, decide.
Thank you.
Okay.
That is an objection to the table, right?
No objection.
That will be for the second one.
All right, um, so we will table the approval minutes from the board meeting of February twenty-fifth. So we want to open for public comment. Uh, any? Anyone online?
Hmm.
Okay. All right, with no one to comment, we'll close public comment. And then new business.
So you have two resolutions, uh, oh, three twenty twenty-five and oh, four twenty twenty-five are essentially the same thing. Uh, we discussed these last month. And we started putting them in the motion, um, just pending board approval. The Ford Explorer, uh, both of these will use bond proceeds to pay for uh when they're received in May, but we can order them now. Uh, the Ford Explorer will be used by the facility tech um that we have uh recently hired uh to manage the facilities of the township and the fire stations. And then the Ford F one, oh, that one, sorry, that's the Ford F one fifty, and then the Ford Explorer would be used for the territory operations manager because she's constantly traveling between this office and then all three fire stations.
Okay.
Uh, so that's what both of these resolutions would be is to uh approve the purchase. We um would be using the discount program. Uh, the Ford Explorer, the Ford uh fleet program, which we did some uh costing around, and this is the cheapest way you can get vehicles like this, so um a significant discount through that full fleet program.
Okay.
So when you say vehicles like this, are there any special provisions for these?
Um, say more.
Like, is there, I mean, uh, what, forty-four thousand?
Yeah, both of them, something like that.
Like, are there any special provisions or needs that, like, not really, but uh?
Um, yeah, no, not really, it's just, you know, we, it has to be new through the fleet program, so they basically order it from the factory. Um, then they're owned by the township, title to the township. Um, we have uh, we are covered under our policy for vehicles, but I spoke with the township attorney, and I asked him that, I think we need to do a whole separate policy when it comes to county vehicles, so he's gonna work on that for a future meeting. Um, but outside of that, no, it's just a pretty good discount on these two vehicles, American-made. Not, not much to complain about there.
Yeah, they made these things in Canada.
In Mexico, yeah.
Better get them now.
Yeah, well, that was discussed, actually, at the, the dealership is watching very closely. And her, she basically straight said that expect prices to go up.
That's why I'm looking for more.
I mean, a forty-four thousand, I mean, that, that is cheap for these type of vehicles, like, if you could easily pay over fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is this, is this at least, or are we buying it outright?
Hmm, buying outright.
Yeah, that's, that's a good deal.
Yep, so the township could, uh, in a couple of years, buy new ones, trade these in, you know, now, you know, on a recurring basis, it goes on to capital assets that we report to the state now as part of all our other capital assets, and uh it's an additional annual reporting that we have to do, so. Um, I don't wanna call it an investment, but that is what's nice about it, in a couple of years, the township can sell them, acquire new ones, and then just pay the difference.
Okay.
So we have to do each of these separately, don't we?
I would.
Well, I make a motion that would pass resolution zero three eight twenty twenty-five.
I second.
All in favor, Ryan?
Muhammad, yes.
Carol?
Oh, yes.
All right, and the motion to pass resolution zero four dash two zero two five. Uh, resolution purchase of Ford F one fifty.
Second.
Nice for you. All in favor, Ryan?
Muhammad, aye. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, oh, five twenty twenty-five is the preliminary bond resolutions. Um, we have Sarah on the call of Ice Miller that can present uh what these are, along with the uh second one, which is the additional appropriation resolution, and I should go into detail of what these two are, each do.
Can you make sure on these it mentions the actual which resolution it is?
Well, it's gonna be attached with this one, but you want it to be on the top of the quarter.
Yeah, I want to mean if we're signing it.
No, I get you, no, no, I get you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
All right, so we have um two resolutions this evening. The first is the bond resolution, um, this resolution was introduced last month. Um, nope, just kidding, we did the reimbursement resolution last month. This is the first resolution that authorizes the actual bonds. Um, it sets sort of our first guardrails on these, so um sets a term of no more than eight years, a maximum interest rate of six million dollars, and a maximum um cost of four million dollars. Um, we will come back with a final bond resolution um next month, which will have a lot more detail in it, it's a lot longer document. Uh, but this is the first one that really sort of sets out um that the township would like to issue bonds. The second resolution um this evening is the additional appropriation resolution. Um, this one we will hold a public hearing on um before we adopt um the resolution, and what this is doing is appropriating those bond funds so that we don't issue them and just have them sitting there. So this is what allows us to actually spend those funds. Happy to answer any questions on either document.
So just an additional note, little education, so Sarah was saying this is a not to exceed four millions, we don't anticipate the actual bond will be four million. It will be less, but once we pass this, we can't go above that, because this is what will get noticed.
Whereas I remember the original discussion where I was looking at three million and I saw it.
Yep, right. But it gives, it gives us that extra time to keep honing in that price so that that number to make sure it's the actual number that we want.
So one of the things that I had mentioned when Jason and I were talking earlier is that I felt like the um provisions for the bond, the cost of acquisition of emergency vehicles, acquisition of property, park projects, cemetery improvements. It seems that's really broad, and I'm a little concerned about it being interpreted as as like a slush fund being created. Um, are there, is there restrictions in here that make sure that this is gonna be targeted toward what we're doing? And the other one I had mentioned also is that if, and this is probably not part of the resolution, but if we just make sure each month it would have a, the financial summary for the township would say this is what the past bond dollars were spent on. So, all right, there's two things there.
One for you, Sarah, one for you on on.
Twenty-five, you own twenty-five.
Uh, oh, six twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, to me, the interpretation seemed really broad, Jason said he thought it was very specific, so I'm.
Yes, so. I, I would say um it's sort of a, a middle ground um for a project description. We see some that are as broad as for capital expenditures within the township, within the town, within the city. Um, and some that get really, really specific on exactly what projects they're going to do. Um, this is sort of a midway point that gives you some flexibility, um, but also does list out the targeted projects. Um, from a legal standpoint, um, flexible is better um in terms of just giving you flexibility of being able to spend the funds. Uh, but we can, when we come back with our final bond resolution, uh, be more specific if that's more comfortable for the, for the board. Um, happy to do that, just need some more detail on what we want those projects to look like. Um, and on your second part, um, I, I know that's a little bit more work, but I, I do think that's a really good idea um just to be tracking everything that we're spending these bond funds on.
I mean, that might be a, a good middle ground just to, for us to have a requirement that each month there's a report on how much has been spent and a list of what the expenditures were.
Yeah, so I was telling Ryan that we, it's part of your budget packet now of what's spent out of there, but we can provide actual listings as well, very easily.
Okay, that was all I had, anything?
Makes sense to me.
Oh, I'm good. All right, um, motion to accept the resolution?
Twenty-five or twenty-six? Or five or six?
Six. Oh, wait, did I skip that?
Yeah, that's what I'm like, I'm like looking, I'm like, what is he talking about?
Well, shoot, that was.
Where the township guidelines go?
They're right here, I got them, don't worry, I got them, I know, don't worry, I got you.
Yeah, so five twenty-five.
Okay, so starting with five twenty-five, motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor of resolutions oh five dash twenty twenty-five? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Okay, resolution number oh six twenty twenty-five, uh, regarding the additional appropriation resolution for those bond dollars, uh, motion to pass? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Sarah, before you go, um, for the board purposes, we have one additional requirement because these funds may be used for a park and or recreational facility, community center. There's an additional requirement that we have got to collect twenty-five signatures from residents of Portage Township. They have to be, they cannot be renters.
Oh, how long?
They have to be homeowners, that's right.
Okay.
You can do a husband and wife.
Wait, wait, quick question.
No, no, I, I, let me, let me, uh, so you can do a husband and wife? I don't know, I gave you too many there, Cheryl, maybe I gave you too, too many, um.
Oh, okay.
You want to comment? Um, you could do a husband and wife separately, they, but they each, obviously, um, they have to be homeowners there. And then if you, 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 the, a good practice is they want you to sign the first one if you are a homeowner as well, and only a homeowner can collect signatures.
Okay, I live in a co-op.
I know, and I don't know, Sarah, what a co-op, oh, she owns it, it's a co-op.
Um, if you receive a property tax bill, then you're eligible, is, is sort of burned.
No, but, but, the co-op receives the bill, and I, and then it's, I pay a monthly assessment, and out of that monthly assessment goes for maintenance and it goes for taxes.
Um.
I personally don't receive.
My interpretation would be that you are a taxpayer, so I think that would be eligible.
I would agree, a rent, it's way different than a renter, she actually owns.
Yeah, I have a, I have a stock certificate that says I own thirty-eight thirty Langley. So there's eighteen, you need twenty-five total?
Twenty-five total, that's it, so I just thought, let's shoot high, by the next board meeting, if you could collect some signatures, we just need twenty-four, they will be certified by the auditor, so he will check to make sure that they are property owners, so shoot it high.
Okay, now, if he's gonna check, and I put my address down, part of the people rent, and part of the people.
People look you up in particular, and I will have that battle with him if I need to.
Okay.
But.
Will it, that, will it make invalid the ones I'm gonna get?
If, if he did not certify you, yes, it would invalidate because you're a petition carrier, and you're gonna sign, you're gonna sign an affidavit next, at the next meeting saying that I will notarize, saying that yes, you did collect these signatures.
Okay, are you concerned about the, some of the people that live in the co-op too, whether their names will appear on it?
No, she means her, like, if she, if she collects, she's right.
You're not concerned about that, are you?
No, I know who owns it, who doesn't own.
I say move forward.
You don't want.
Everybody else to get rejected.
Yeah, that's right, I would say move forward, you, I believe you're an owner, and I believe that.
Okay.
I can get something, I can get something from the co-op that says my assessment fee, some of it goes toward property tax.
I think the county auditor would see you live there and know that that's a co-op, and would know that you are an owner, yeah.
But I'll get it just in case.
Okay. Guys, get there, so by our next board meeting, however many signatures you can collect, that would be helpful.
Send Jen out on the case.
That's what I'm, I'm, I'm just sitting up here like, uh, yo, you go for a walk all the time?
Well, I was getting ready, I was kind of leaning on you to get most of them.
Do you wanna fill out those sheets?
Not a property.
Any other questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, that's all that I have for that, um, I can turn it over to the chief to uh describe our next resolution.
We're looking to purchase an ambulance as part of your bond proceeds.
Big deal.
Uh, huge deal, be able to provide service ourselves into the uh fire territory. Kind of a critical timing wise, because of our medical certifications we have, we have some guys that have advanced certifications and maintain those advanced certifications, we need to be able to provide transport services by June first. So this ambulance came available through a, a vendor, and we can take delivery, it's, yeah, that one there, takes delivery uh up, up the third week of April, so that gives us a couple of weeks to get some of the equipment installed on it and uh the operational beginning of May.
I have, please, please include this packet with the board packet for this specs of the ambulance. Um, Alex asked that this be included with the board packet, and if anybody wants to look it over, this is in horrible, horrible detail exactly what is in this ambulance. I mean, it is. It says that's like stereo inspections, maybe. Here it is. It comes with turn signals.
This seems to be less than we had talked about.
So at the fire territory, we, we, in addition to the chassis, which is three hundred and thirty thousand roughly from Pennwell, we had to put a power load striker cop in the back of it, that's seventy-five thousand dollars.
What was that, is that?
That's the actual cop you sit on, if we're transporting you to the.
Oh, okay.
And the, the standard now is have it be one that does power raised and lowered, so you're not throwing your back, lifting a person in the back of the cop. As well as the cardiac monitor, um, that's another forty thousand dollars, so those items we included in the territory meeting when we said our total is like about five hundred and five thousand dollars for the ambulance, we need to go with other.
Oh, okay, so that's not on here, that's the difference, okay, we still have to purchase that stuff.
Purchase those things, uh, but it won't, it's not part of the um spec others of just ammo.
Okay.
And then on a side note, more of a fire giviness, is there's a huge conference in, called FDIC down in Indianapolis, attended by probably fifty thousand firefighters from around the world. This ammo could be on display there with Central County Fire Territory marked or lettered across to it, so it's a very good signature thing to have for other people to see and realize that we're serious about our territory.
And given that we are well-known around the state for doing this, and.
Yeah.
There was some, you know, um, questioning if we were, you know, going to be able to pull this off, it, that, that's a, he's sort of downplaying that that's a big deal, that we're able to like sort of brag, and like, yeah, this is going well, you know, yeah.
After we vote on this, I've had a couple.
Sure.
So the FDIC is in April?
Correct.
What day?
What's that?
What day?
Uh, the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. Would you like to go? I got one free pass left.
No.
Okay.
Um, not because I don't really wanna go, but because that's, actually, that is right around spring break.
I just.
And there's during the week, so I can't go, because I'm at work at there, um. And this be ready by yet?
Good question.
Would, what be ready?
Would the ambulance be ready?
Well, the ambulance was actually already under production.
Okay.
So they were building it, so when we started the, the hunt for an ambulance, we reached out to Penn Care, I think is their name, their company, and they're the dealer for brawn, and we're just like, hey, we're in process, look at our ambulances, use, do you, my guys? I chance have any demos coming out that are available that maybe you've been had in your stock, and the guy says, well, you know, it just so happens, we have two that are coming down the line right now that are gonna be done production in March. We're planning to send those to FDIC, nobody has spoken for those yet. Nothing wrong with them, just nobody, a lot of people like to spec their own deal exactly how they want it, we're willing to concede on that right in that spec, because I just wanna inflate the cost, and he says, so if you guys wanna put your name on this, you can have it, and I'll put the graphics on it, so it's ready for FDIC, and we're like, yeah, that's really nice.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say no, like, I didn't wanna go, I know it's gonna be a good time, but.
But that, that's why, timing wise, it's coming off, literally, I can have a picture where if you're, and show you just came off the line, they're getting ready to put the, the graphics on it, and it'll be there, and then a week after that, they bring it back from FDIC, they wash all the fingerprints off of it, and then they deliver it to us.
So we'll have it in time to be ready by June first.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other firefighters going with you?
I will be in the Netherlands, I'm not going to FDIC this year, but we.
You won't ask me, do I, you didn't ask me, did I wanna go to it?
It's his past.
That's my past, you have, but that, we are sending six other firefighters to FDIC to look at stuff, so, yeah. It's my wife's thirty anniversary, I guess it's ours.
Is it yours too?
Yeah, it's ours.
All right, all right, all right.
Yeah, we don't wanna hurt his feelings.
Yeah.
One of the things I had mentioned in the uh territory meeting though was having a cost analysis on how much we save by making sure we don't lose those certifications.
Correct.
So.
We've, we've got some of those numbers for you, I wasn't planning to have that for today, but it, right now, if we were to train a paramedic for this group, if we were to train a paramedic, it, it takes them about five hundred hours of time to go through that whole class and everything. So if you're paying them overtime and everything, it's a twenty, thirty thousand dollar plus investment in just their time of doing it, as well as it takes about two years from them, from start to finish, to become certified. So the eight or ten paramedics that we've recruited to work for us, we don't want them to lose their certification and start over, which is why we wanna start doing the transport now, it helps us maintain their, their certification, so.
And it also might be a good thing to pair up with that, just they comment, like, if they're able to, you know, save a couple of lives, right, you know, quality of life year can be used to kind of make that a monetary amount, like, if they save two or three people in the first year.
Yeah.
That covers this pretty easily.
Yeah.
So, things to, to consider when we.
We have a very good crew, and there's, there are very good people, and they already have made a difference on, on multiple calls of, of early starting care early and uh, and, and make that difference, but we, we plan to continue to document those.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions or comments regarding resolution oh seven twenty twenty-five?
Okay, the ambulance, I just had one question. How are we gonna deal with issues of people not having insurance? To pay the ambulance?
So we have a billing service that we're contracting with, so that billing service is just like any other billing service. So at the time of care needed, we don't worry about whether you can afford it, we transport you to the hospital, and then we capture that uh, what's called electronic patient care report, we transist, give that to our billing service, they send out a bill. If you don't have insurance and it does get paid, that's no different than anywhere else, where that end up becoming a write-off or whatever, whatever the case is, so. Um, Medicaid or private pay or whatever it is, they, they, they know that system, and they code it out and send out that bill. If they don't, if they don't pay it, then that's, that's no good for them.
We're not gonna take them to court.
No, no, we don't do that, we don't do that now, we bill right now, uh, we use, on a separate note, recovery hub to bill for like fires and accidents and that, and again, our position with them is you send them one bill, if they can't pay it, because they don't have insurance to pay it, which is where ninety-nine percent of the money comes from, we do not pursue them through collection, it's just, it's just dropped and we move on.
Okay.
But we send that initial bill and, and we collect, you know, a few thousand dollars a year from, to cover our disposable, our disposable expenses.
And you had mentioned something at the fire territory meeting about one of the guys that was uh, essentially able to do treatment at the scene, but wasn't able to.
Those are the conflict we have going, going with South Bend right now, they're kinda uh, uh, butthurt that we're doing what we're doing, and.
Because normally they would serve.
Well, so they come, so they come out with their ambulance, but the, the level of certification you need to be on the ambulance is here. The level of certification you can have could be here, so sometimes that person that comes out is up there, sometimes they're down here. So we've had a few calls where that person that has come out is on the lower level, they're not bad, but they're on the lower level. We have people that are on scene that are at the higher level, and they're like, hey, you know what, this person, Cheryl, she's a little more critical, I think I should ride with you to the hospital, make sure she's okay. It's like, no, we're not gonna allow you to do that, and we're, because you're part of the territory, and our administration's unhappy that you guys are doing what you're doing, so we're not gonna let you come. You're putting this patient's life at risk, we're just not gonna do it, okay, you guys go ahead and go, so that's part of the reason why we want the ambulance, to be able to control that better ourselves.
Okay. So I will make sure I heard you right. Two ambulance show up, right, is that what you're saying?
An ambulance and a fire truck.
Okay, ambulance and a fire truck, and the fire truck belongs to us.
Correct.
But our person on the fire truck has a higher certification than the person that came in the ambulance.
Correct.
And then, uh, the person on the fire truck is saying, mm, I don't know.
A stroke, I think I need to provide some higher level care during your transport.
And then South Bend saying, no, you can't come with us.
Correct. And the, the, the flip side of that, let's say you have that higher level person that comes out on the ambulance, and is like, hey, this guy's really critical, I need an extra hand of you just to come along and help me um give respirations to this patient while we're transporting, they'll want us to come and do that, or, hey, I need you to drive our ambulance in, because we both in the ambulance need to be in the back working with the patient. We'll, we'll take you guys and have you do that, but on the flip side, when their crew is lesser trained, and we have higher trained people on scene, they don't want our higher trained people in the back of the ambulance going to the hospital, which is really dumb.
Okay, so my next question is, in the conversation I'm sure you had with South Bend about this, what's their reasoning for not letting the higher certified person go?
We actually, they have not directly told us this, this is their guys on the street that have thought, so we have, we have not had the direct conversation with their chief of EMS on as to why, uh, we've talked to the medical director, and next Thursday, we're going to their EMS committee meeting, so we'll see what happens.
Because what I would like to see is us formally pursue that the higher level person, if it's us, then we go. That the higher level person, if it's us, then we go. Cuz I know if it was my relative.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'd want that.
I'd be upset.
Yeah.
I'd normally say another word, but.
Yeah, well, that's why it's important to have that conversation before we make too many assumptions.
I also would start documenting. When our people can't go and they are the higher level.
That, that we started to do. But, but you're right, and and they've not wanted to officially tell us this because they realized the the liability was they're taking on with that, so.
That's a good point.
There, there's, yeah, there's, there's. But, but it's happening, so we've started that process. Would I feel the correct way to address the issue? And and I think the the having our ambulance just kinda further cements than that ability to. To address it, so.
Because one of the things I guess I'm thinking is, y- y- you might even want to. Have people say in a very formal way of that they want to go, so that it's not. Well, you know, I've got a little higher certification and I might be able to help you, but just out now I have a higher certification and I um. Want to go cuz this person's in our territory. I mean, very direct, so.
Legally, you, you can't take a person from a higher level of certification. To a lower level certification. You can't do that. So technically, those guys that do that are breaking the law. So as we, as we would want to pursue that and document that, hey, look, this person clearly met this criteria. You took them from a higher level of. A lower level kind of albat just for ten minutes while you transported, but that is against.
Ten minutes could be a lot can happen.
So as the, as the cases come up, I meet with our guys and say, okay, how did this happen? Is this one of those things where it's purely clear that this guy's bleeding out and and death was imminent and they told you no? Or is this one of those gray areas like, ah, I think he's maybe doing okay, maybe not. I said, because I'm not gonna go fight over a gray area. I said, but if it's clear, I said, we're gonna have that case and that discussion. And so we are preparing those. Those things.
Like us to be a little careful about this cuz as you're saying, if it's. This could be seen as a pretty serious accusation. We've gotta have some documentation.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that, and that's why I say is, is I meet with our guys and say, okay, explain to me what really happened. And is this a case where I need to call Chief Myers and say, hey, look, this just happened and this is, this is a problem. And and really, it's, it's you're outside of your established guidelines. When do you wanna continue this course or not, so?
And we gotta be sure like, that's not rumors at the scene, like there's genuine, they there. Certifications are, you know, so.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent.
Everybody's certifications on record.
Yeah, yeah, and they know, they know who's who, so, so yeah, but that goes, going back to our ambulance of just. It it begins to take that out of that equation and helps us continue our front forward, so.
Okay. Alright, um, well, I think that all looks to be in order. I don't think there's anything else. Uh, so. Uh, motion passed resolution oh seven dash twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, next is a fractional marketing agreement that we would like to board the review. Um, and we'd love to have your input and uh. Sorry, not in there.
I saw it on the agenda.
Did I not make copies?
Show me what it looks like.
See a contractor.
Independent contractor. I'm sorry, yeah, titled it something else. It's the same arrangement we have with our HR individual. This would be for us to contract with an individual to assist with our, not just a um. Not just creating graphics and getting things out there, but actually developing a strategy around it. So when we have things like the senior center opening coming up, when we have something like the ambulance coming up, like. Somebody who's going to sit down and strategize, what is our communication strategy around that? What's the medium that we're putting that in? They're gonna sit and help design, uh, that sort of stuff, so. It's an agreement thirty-five dollars an hour not to exceed twenty, so seven hundred dollars a month maximum, which is a pretty good deal uh, for us. Um, again, we're sort of handling all that in-house at the moment, but we're not being very strategic about it. We're just kind of like doing it as we go. And so it would be really um, nice to have someone who's doing it at a higher level and that is just focused on how we do that. That's what this agreement would be for.
Do you already have a contractor?
We have somebody in mind, yeah, her name's Corinne Straight. Um, she lives in Elkhart. She worked five years, she worked for W N I T for many years. And she worked for the city of Elkhart for five as a communications director.
And what is the, the purpose of doing that? Is it to maximize participation in these initiatives? Is it?
Yes, actually, so like, good example of this is the nourish program and this is not an indictment of anybody doing anything badly. Let me start with that.
Disclaimer.
This is where we go with the staff sometimes. Things went story really well with the nourish program, but the marketing budget that we had for nourish. Was used primarily for traditional TV ads on WSBT and not much else. And it was fine for the, you know, inaugural thing, but it was like, well, there's clearly more creative ways we can get with that. These days, people are not getting their information just on TV or just mail. There's this whole. Um, short video, this TikTok world, this um, you know, guerrilla sort of style, social media marketing. Like, what, what are these avenues that we're not getting to some people because they're not seeing what we're doing here? So. When you talk about the senior center, when we talk about the food pantry, when we talk about all these new things, even property inspections, even um. If we're gonna go onto Rosie Place and do a thing out there, we should be bragging about that, you know, the Fire Territory is these great things that's going to help us. The Fire Territory, um, ambulance service, you know, that's one I thought of as I was sitting here like, oh, we gotta make sure we have that included. So the idea is it's around programming in general or things in general, not the township per se. But, but more of things the township is doing.
More focused.
Very focused, yeah, that's the idea.
I just have one question.
Sure.
We couldn't find anybody in Portage Township that did this?
We could, and this is, we can change at any point, no, no, easily. This is not, this is renewable and this is also. Um, get rid of them. She, she, I have, I've just met her. And I was just blown away about how good she was at what she was doing in this space. She has a huge following. She just, yeah, I was just blown away how good she is. So no, you're right, we could absolutely look at someone else too. We could add on other people. We could try someone else. This was just a, I thought we would give this a shot and see how this went because it's cheap.
You know, my whole thing is I just like to pay people.
Agreed.
Who live in your.
Agreed.
District or territory, so.
Where possible, our dollars should be going to our area.
Sure, I think she would help with recruiting at all.
Uh, yeah, oh yeah, like recruiting video, like.
I'm thinking like when we begin to wanna recruit some more firefighters.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, yeah, developing materials.
Different areas that we wanna try to hit that we don't normally do.
Even if she's not the one developing them and if we, we have to have someone better doing it, she is the one seeing and providing the guidance. She knows what we're doing and what we're going. She's our voice in the room. And then the placement of those ads, cuz that's always my big thing, like, yeah, we can make these beautiful ads, but then what are we doing? We're done. We're not gonna go spend twenty thousand dollars on TV ads. How do we get the most for our money and somebody that's managing a hundred percent of recruiting? But like, not just you're boring, I'm looking for creative.
Yeah.
Hey, don't apply like, no, like, what's, what's, what's speaking to people these days? I don't know, I'm not in touch with it, I'm not gonna, so. Um, that would be the idea.
That would be my only thing is, if we could find somebody who live in Portage Township.
I didn't offer for her to move here, run for office, cuz I thought she was so good at what she does. But yeah, I'll definitely make a note of that, Cheryl.
I guess my choice first is Portage Township first. And technically South Bend next. And then next would be Saint Joe County and then work your way. Like this.
I can do that, I can look around.
What'd you guys think?
No, I think I know who you're talking about.
You probably do. She's become very popular very fast.
No, I mean, in general, though, I do think we should have open bidding process or open hiring processes. Uh, if we're just choosing someone, like, I think that goes contrary to prior resolutions we've had regarding hiring for.
Well, this isn't hiring, but I can be meaning, yeah.
Um, so I mean, that's, that's just, like, if they're the best person, they're the best person, but. Putting it out there to make sure that there are other people have a chance.
That's true, yeah, and I could do that, it's just, I mean, J two marketing is gonna cost, charge us four thousand dollars to do this. You know, any marketing firm is, I mean, they want, they put proposals in front of us that we've, we, we have gotten those. And we've said, no, it's just not worth the cost. Um, so we can, I mean, we can go get more, uh, but I have looked at those from firms. And I just couldn't justify the cost.
We're looking for someone, I take it, that does this as a single person business as opposed.
I think that's the preference. This isn't a sign job. This is what they do, like with our HR person, she has other clients that this is what she does. Yeah, that's right. But again, uh, you know, I'm not meaning to throw J two marketing on the bus cuz they've done great work for us on other things, but I just.
Different kinda, yeah, that's a lot, different kinda.
I don't think our need is that high.
What do you think, Mohammed? Should we look for, open it up to other people?
Other proposals to you? I mean, is that what you want? I mean.
Yeah, and generally, I, I agree with you guys, like, in general, I mean, like, I believe that people that we hire should be in Portage Township. Um, when you say South Bend, also I've been basically in Portage Township.
Right, right, there's a little.
Ireland Road.
Yeah, but we, I will never go out there, so.
Listen, I live near Ireland Road.
They had to invite me out there cuz it's really not a place I go.
So this would also be limited to basically the seven hundred a month.
Uh, that's, it's not to exceed, yeah, twenty hours a month, that's right.
Right, alright.
So can we?
It'd be, it could be.
Can we put something together? Can we put something together and then advertise it out open to other people?
People, we haven't, Jason just asked somebody in mind, we haven't picked a contractor.
No, she's saying to like, she's like, put it out, like, come bid on being our fractional making and.
Making, yeah, pretty big.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable. Um, and even if, again, like, they might just be the best person, maybe the best person, it's fine. Uh, but, you know, there's some other people teams to, to take a shot at it. But this, yeah, so this resolution though is not about the person, it's just approving that that position is.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
So.
That you're, that's, that's fair, yeah, this would be what the arrangement would look like. But I can bring the board back, other proposals, open proposals next month.
Um, I guess my thing is just take basically this and open it up to other people. You know.
Well, I mean, I don't think.
You have to change anything.
So I see what Ryan's saying, yeah.
But just, I wanna be wary of always hiring the person that, you know, so one of us knows, so.
Oh, I just met her, actually, I did not know her. I just took into the J two and the force five.
Should we make a motion that will table this?
There's no resolution here.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure this requires board approval, but I would like it, so we can. You can approve the concept and I can bring names to you, I mean, or you can table the whole thing. That's, that's up to you. You can, you can, you can. I, I don't know, it's up to you, whatever you wanna do here.
Let's table it for now, um, cuz there is no, no attached resolution, so.
No, there won't be a resolution.
Okay.
That's what I mean, like, I don't know if this requires board approval.
Because it's basically like, even though it's a contractor, it's still like you hire staff.
No, no.
We would have to cuz that would be salary.
That's right, the, if, this is like if I, if the furnace broke and I paid someone to come fix it.
Right, this is.
We could just do it, but I thought it was worthy of board discussion.
Sure, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, just.
The concept, I'm fine with the concept.
I think everyone just wants to make sure, just talk to a couple people first, so.
I agree with that, oh, and I'll, I'll bring more details in the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Maybe it'll surprise you. I mean, it sounds good, thank you.
Alright, so the next item on new business, uh, we all know kind of the, the issues we've been having with the. Um, city and the purchase of this building versus. Uh, their desire for the, some of the property that we purchased in the development around us. So I did meet with James, uh, the mayor to kind of talk that over and just to make sure that, you know, there was. Dialogue about, you know, both ways there. Um, I, one of the things, my purpose going into the meeting was making sure that he understood, like, from the start, we have been proactive in communication. We have been clear about wanting to be supportive in the city development. Um, when they, when Jason came back and said, when they had talked about it and said they might want the parking lot, we said. You know, that is something that we're open to, we're just, uh, looking to be compensated for parking spaces, et cetera. But, you know, we didn't wanna be in the way of anything. Um, if there were, if he felt there were communication issues between himself and Jason or his team. Like, he could always contact us directly because the board does have the specific authority over conveniences. Um, and from our perspective, we had, you know, con- worked very hard to keep that communication ocean, open. And just didn't get it back from the city. Um, and there, there could be different reasons for that, not worrying about that, but more trying to set a better tone for the future. Um, in the mayor's case, he said that despite all of this communication, he felt that. He was blindsided by the purchase in December, in September. Uh, by our plan to purchase in September and didn't understand why we're inserting ourselves in the neighborhood plan. Again, we tried to communicate about this with them. Um, he felt that we overpaid heavily for the property, but we were. Again, in our perspective, we had had Alex go over the legal issues, we had observed the statutes very strictly. Which is, might be why the property was a little bit more expensive because we are so restricted in how that appraisal and bidding process is. Um. He felt that Jason had said that the town in September when they met that. Jason had said that they had done, we had done a lot of work on the acquisition, the city should have a proposal. Uh, and just kind of felt like there was no room to negotiate there. Uh, and then one of the other things that he mentioned was that their plan for the twenty twenty-five plan had moved a lot more quickly because of. Bids for the properties around, for the construction and development. Um, so it feels like they were also a little blindsided by the. Sudden speed of it and suddenly the idea of running that road through and everything was a much more urgent thing. Um, the other thing that came up is the feeling that we were rewarding a property speculator, but.
Rewarding what?
A property speculator. So it sounds like there's been some contention between the person we purchased this property from. In the city and other areas. But again, we were very restrictive based on statute of what we could do, right? Had to be the average of those appraisals. Um.
Well, I'm quite big. Are you saying the fact that we are gonna have a person who will look at a property for places we give money for rent? He's upset about that?
No, this is about the purchase of three forty.
Okay, this year, okay.
So as you recall, statute requires that we get two appraisals.
Right.
And we are restricted on how much we pay for the property based on the average of those appraisals.
Okay.
Like, there's no room there to, to pay more and it's in statute, so it's hard for us to negotiate, right? Cuz they, so you can pay this much. Want you to pay this much.
Okay. So he knows this.
Yeah.
He should know that we're kind of restricted being of, at the average of two appraisals, right?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I've told Ryan that in my opinion, based on this conversation and my conversation with him. I think he's operating the assumption that we operated illegally, that we did not follow proper processes, that we don't know what we're doing. I, this is the feeling that I've been. Yeah.
That's what I'm asking is.
We follow the same process any government agency would.
Right.
And if you all recall, I was pretty like, I had a lot of questions for Alex, making sure that we were following those processes.
Document.
Um, and documenting everything, so. Again, it feels to me there's just a very big communication issue there or some hostility toward the, the guy that we purchased the place from. Um, cuz the city has had issues acquiring things elsewhere, maybe, I don't know.
What have they got to do with us? I guess I'm saying that in the sense of if we followed all the rules, which is what I understand. And uh, then whether the city has issues with who we bought that. Uh, property from.
Yeah, well, they're also citing the fact that they were able to s- get the properties around us much more cheaply. But they're also using, uh, what's it called, the um.
Eminent domain.
The Development Commission.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment rules, which are a little different, right? We don't have that. Uh, so they're able to, to do different things with that, so. That's the thing, it feels like there, there is a lot of information not flowing there. Um, basically, I just, when the meeting was ended, we, I just reiterated, like, it is our. Goal to work together and to support the city development however we can. I talked about the possibility of selling some of the. I talked about the possibility of selling some of the, the lot as long as we're able to get, you know. Accommodated in the future with future built parking being built, et cetera. Um he kind of dismissed that, saying, you know, it's too expensive to build that. We've got to keep that for other things. Um and he just feels that the lawsuit to seize that property is going to be, you know, easy. Um so again, my, my point was reiterating, like, he could talk to all of us. We didn't need to have the communication blocked. Like, we all are committed to supporting the city, um but I just didn't feel it was a very well received.
Okay, well, one thing I think um hereforth or whatever word I can't think to say is. We wanna keep detailed records of our interaction with the city.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, uh and, and a detailed report and all that, like who we talked to, when we talked, how long the talk was. So that.
Well, it's been part of the court filings, right? I kind of reconstructed it myself as well, going through emails and what I remembered from earlier discussions, et cetera. Um but having that available in case there is any just general question. Uh it's probably a good idea because again, we've tried to be very open. We've tried to be very clear about this, but I don't.
Because I'm saying this is because I don't know, but if he seems to be unaware of stuff. Um, you know, we wanna be able to say, well, on such and such a date, such and such a person talked. To such and such a person is they started talking at this, they ended talking it. Ended this talkingness or whatever, and here was what was said.
Yeah, you want to keep minutes.
Uh yeah, like, yeah, cuz it, it sounds like.
And people can hear different things, right?
That's true.
The other one that kind of gets me is I feel there is, there might have been issues earlier on where people were saying. Well, yeah, we're not worried about that at the moment and maybe we heard like, we're not worried about that or vice versa.
Right.
Right?
Hmm, but that's why I think we need detail.
That's why after meeting, you have to send people a, a summary like, this is what we talked about.
Right, and I guess that's what I'm saying. We wanna make sure it happens from now on, so that. City can come back and say, no, no, that's not what I meant. You know what I mean? Instead of getting way down the. Time frame, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, that's. Like, we, I, I feel after that conversation, like, we have done what we could. We have reached out many times. And we're just haven't had that back, right? Like, it take, it took them. Over a month to respond sometimes to try to set up things and that would be several months between, so we just started going ahead with it.
Do we, if, if we were asked, would we be able to say on such and such a date?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
At around such and such a time, such and such.
Our lawyer has all that.
Okay.
Re- like Ryan said, it's.
Reconstruct.
The timeline along with the emails, along with my memos and yeah, I'm, I'm big on that show.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing that I did, alright, this one's a little funny. I did say, our meetings are public. They are. Uploaded onto YouTube as, even before that was required, right? We were.
Still not required, or still not.
Oh, really?
Yeah, July this year.
Oh, so we're way ahead of that.
Way ahead.
Um and I asked, why, if you knew there was this conflict, why aren't you sending people to our meetings? Because I feel like that would be reasonable. Um and he said it was just difficult because he didn't feel like they had a lot of people who wanted to do that. It's like, I don't understand, like, that should, if you are focusing on this massive development. And this could be a problem. You need to have a representative there again, just keep people.
It's at five o'clock.
Wait a minute, that's not, don't need to pay a bunch of people to do that? How many outreach people do we have?
Well, they have someone at every neighborhood meeting that I have been to in the last year. Um so they do have people doing that. I understand there's a lot going on, but it just feels like, uh I mean.
This is important.
Should have, we are doing a lot in the community and they should have someone here to help coordinate, right?
But once, I guess my statement is, once they thought there was some issues about the property, then I'd have had someone here.
Right.
That's all.
But we also know from one of the other council members speaking that they didn't know what time they were, when they were, felt it was all being done in secret, but. Again, they're publicly posted meetings, so.
Okay.
Um again, we've done what we can. Uh we have continued to be open and working toward. Uh progress for both. I extended the invitation to have someone at the meetings. It didn't seem that was something they're interested in, so. I don't, um but I just wanted to update you all because. We did sit down and talk and that seemed to be kind of the, the gist of it, so.
Okay.
I think before next month, I will send an email to the entire council. Any of you would like to join us tomorrow from five to six to see what we're doing, um. Just to reiterate, we are open and our meetings are public and they can join online or come in and see us, so.
I'm good.
And if I would personally um extend an invitation for him to send someone.
Oh, well.
I know you said it verbally, but, you know, resend it.
And, and I don't know. I mean, I, I can think of a few people that we do work with in the city that might be interested in, in coming in to see. You know, to help out or be that communications person, so we'll see. But I mean, we, we just. We're doing what we're doing. We're doing good work, so that might be a part of it.
Great, many of them are fans of what we're doing, so that might be a problem for some others.
So, quick question, where, you know, what part we can reveal? And uh where are we at with the court stuff?
Yeah, there's no update.
Okay.
When's the next?
I don't know. I'd have to look.
Okay.
I'll update you.
Alright, I will also share kind of my, the timeline I put together and the minutes from that conversation.
Okay.
Uh. At some point, so. Good, yeah, I think that's really all from that.
Alright, um whole business, we just have voucher due date policy, which we don't have yet. Um but I'm keeping it on there because we will. Township Guidelines Signature Page, thank you, Lana. I've been trying to get this year. All you were out that day, so. Um if everybody wants to go ahead and sign this, there's no vote. And you already voted on this and everything. I need everybody to sign it. Uh we can upload the actual signed copy.
Is the nourish meeting tonight?
Uh no, there's no nourish.
Oh, oh, I had on my.
Hmm, no. Um. Um so Budget Assistance Review, you got all the budget and assistance numbers. As you can see, our numbers are starting to tick up now as they do. I also have for you the first quarter of the CASA numbers. As you recall. Uh we changed our arrangement a bit and we're now paying them quarterly upon receipt of a quarterly report. We have that in hand there now. They did not um even burn through that first payment that we made to them yet, so um that's good. So they should have plenty on hand for us to release those um the next payments to them.
Um what's this one that has no landlord name?
Where yet?
Um number three.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me find that page.
It might not have been. Yeah, they might have owned.
Well, that may.
Renting a house, a room, yeah.
Right.
There's a small amount.
Yeah, all, it's always going to be, it's a tricky situation on how much information they're wanting to, yeah, share.
That's fine.
Yeah, this is our, this has been the happy medium that we've arrived at. Initials and, you know, sending stuff, we're looking toward entering into our numbers. This goes to here.
Okay.
You're talking about the Larises.
Yeah, I was just curious. That's alright, not a, not an issue.
Yeah, I can follow up if you need me to. Um facilities, um Portage Pantry, I just have a, a note here that. I am exploring the idea of creating our, it's a separate nonprofit, govern the pantry. Some townships do that. I'm finding some don't. There is upsides and there are downsides. Some of the upsides are um. That uh, you know, you're maybe able to increase your donations because it's now a tax write-off for folks. Um but some of the downsides are, it can get unwieldy, you know, it can get, you can lose some sort of control and go in directions you don't want it to go in. Um it can get kind of messy, uh that kind of thing. So I'm really just starting to look into that. We did get a timeline from Alex on what does it look like to create the nonprofit? And given the current IRS timelines, it's, it would be like almost a year just to sum it up. Also, we probably couldn't do it while we're in a building that we paid for with a bond. That's a whole nother legal sort of situation, but I'm not sure what's going to be left of the IRS to audit us, but. Um that's where that sits right now. And then I added on here, Mathis Little League. Um so they, they have reached out as we've been kind of talking about. We built into the bond uh estimates the possibility of helping out out there. So they're talking about uh asking for around two hundred and fifty thousand. So I've asked them to come back and provide us specifics on what that would be doing, what would happen with the. Because they don't wanna, we don't wanna own the Little League out there or the fields, but if we were to build fields, if we were to pay for. You know, concession stands and all that, what kind of signage should we put on that? And they basically said whatever we want. Like, they, it just has to also say Mathis Little League. It's titled that way, um but.
We would be operating that though.
Along with uh Mathis Little League itself. It's its own nonprofit. We would be partnering with Mathis Little League and they're also partnering with South Bend Cubs. So that's what that looks like. So for our next board meeting, I asked for specifics because we will get that bond money in May. And um I've asked them to go ahead and start drafting and what, what agreement between us would look like. What we'd be thinking, but basically, we could put Portage Township all over out there, wherever they want. And it's in a great place. It's right by our fire station. It's right on the edge of the city, very popular on the west side and. Actually, we hear a lot about this. People see activity out there and they're like, are you guys, are people putting this together again? Because I played here all my life. Well, also, real, real, real big community win there. If that's something we want.
So, um, yeah. Is, does Mathys, so do they just sponsor the filter way?
It's named after them because the family donated the land back in the day, but it's now its own separate nonprofit. It's just how the land is titled. It always had.
That, that's cool.
Yep.
Is it within the city limits of South Bend?
Just barely, just off Mayflower. Mayflower is.
It's um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like.
Where I grew up. Uh my whole family did too. It was Garden Lane and. That's wrong, it was Garden Lane. Garden Lane, yeah, that's mine. That's my, my great grandfather lived. Bendix House. Yes, those are all Bendix houses, right, you know?
I have a, a close friend that lived over there. Like, you have to drive past that park and they can drive.
That's right, yeah. Well, Link Coleman always called Western Avenue, the, the Mason Dixon line. Cause he said all the white pollack were living on one side of, of it, and then, you know, all the white folks were on the other side, over on the lake. Um which I was talking, I mean, it weighed out like that. I mean, that's where my family grew up, yeah.
Well, um my, my question is, like, is Parks and Benny is not interested at all in helping?
No, it's right. It, it, it's adjacent to their own fields, they'll bill and out there and they're not. It's, it has, it can't be, I don't know. But they're not. I, I asked the same question. The city's not really interested in acquiring more park area. I asked that same.
Later on, I wanna talk about something about the food pantry, okay?
Yeah, no, we can circle back to anything. Uh swearing in ceremony for the fire territory. You guys got the details of that. Um I'm bringing you, as a matter of fact, out there. But um, you know, just give a head count. I think Sammy is collecting so that we can know for food. So the idea there is the ceremony, um and then dinner at, at South Bend Country Club and then. Like an ice cream social at the new fire station for folks to open house over there.
Twenty eight.
Twenty, not this Friday, but next Friday.
Okay, snap, got it on here.
Just respond to that link.
I gotta go back and find it. It's someplace in my email.
I can always have a.
Can you resend it?
Yeah.
Do you see the list or no? Or just same?
Uh she said one time a list to the people, but I don't see the updates.
Well, we'll just have these. Um then St. Patrick's Day parade has been rescheduled. It's this week, this Saturday. If you'd like to be in it, we will have plenty of vehicles in it.
Oh, if you got vehicles, I can do it.
Uh I said the same thing to my wife. I was like, if you wanna come in it, you can come sit in the car and drive it. So she, she can drive Miss Daisy.
Okay, yeah, she can drive Miss Daisy.
I told her she can bring the dog and everything, but we're gonna have um, we're gonna have a couple, we're gonna have an engine and a brush truck or. So we'll have a couple of fire apparatuses out there and then our crews coming out. We got. We're giving out beads and candy. We got green beads and candy.
Yeah, Abby was a, she was, she was excited. I had to call her Friday. I'm like.
It's looking like decent.
Like, Apple, they, they, they canceled the parade. She's like, okay.
Yeah, no, this one's looking like decent weather.
But she's in that parade with me every year.
Yeah, that's a fun one.
Like, she's ready to go.
And then, of course, we'll be in the west side parade.
Okay, so can you send where we're supposed to meet?
Yeah, right there on Jefferson, right?
You know what, you know what, we'll, you call me next week and we'll.
Could I know?
We'll drive you. We'll drive you from here. If you plan to come here.
Come here.
We'll drive you.
Okay, I'll be here at ten thirty?
Uh I don't see why not, sure.
Okay, ten thirty.
We'll meet y'all down there, cuz.
I'm supposed to be at the bookstore, so I'm just double checking if I can push that back a little.
Like, it's fast. I mean, we'll.
Now, when you get a workout. Yeah.
Walking the parade route's like ten minutes. It's just how long, how far back are we and all that.
Okay, alright, I might see if I can adjust that then. Um for the west side one, let me know.
Yeah, that'll be Memorial Day, isn't it? They sent out something too, but we're gonna, I saw.
The meetings?
I saw what they said.
No, 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 no. I had the, I had my sweatshirt on and everything.
Alright, um and then a quick one, uh just we drug testing. So the, we've never done drug, drug testing before with the fire department. Drug testing policy obviously had to be incorporated here. Um and like, because we have to treat all employees equally. Um all employees are now subject, all new employees are subject to drug testing. But um we were able to arrange that administrative or township office staff get a ten, get a nine panel drug test done. While firefighters get a full ten panel drug test done. You can imagine what's left out. Um so that is the key difference. So if somebody's injured at work, they have to go get a drug test and if some new hires have to be drug tested.
I'm making the assumption, when I worked at the library and if we were driving one of their vehicles. Or if you were driving to deliver books, that once a year, we had to be. Like randomly drug tested? No, it wasn't drug testing. They were just looking to see if we had the accidents.
Oh, okay, yeah, we haven't had to do that.
But you all do that, don't you? Okay.
Uh and Senior Center, you guys were getting my emails there, so next week, twenty, twenty eighth.
Right.
Is our um open house, or is it open house? Twenty fifth, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, like, uh.
Eleven to two, open house. And then we don't have details yet, but they're planning, they wanna do a media grand opening event, April first, so maybe keep your schedules available.
Yeah, I was planning to come to the, whatever it was.
I got skipped.
Definitely, yeah, I saw. Can definitely come April first. If you can't come, March twenty fifth.
April first. And then, so I'll skip the twenty fifth. I'll take the first off.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you wanna just mention that next board meeting, So Loved is something you might be bringing?
Oh, yeah, um so I've been, uh I don't know if any of you know the, the nonprofit So Loved. But they're a really good group that does training for women, uh women who are either, you know, dealing with poverty issues or going through. Um, you know, kind of things a lot of women do in the community. Uh they will actually take them and teach them sewing skills and skills for producing. Just different kinds of materials, textiles and others. Uh and they're, they're really good. They actually made all of the hats during Pete's campaign. Uh and like two or three weeks ago, I was putting on my hat and like, I had gotten a different one for Christmas and like, I don't like this one. I like that one. Wonder what happened to that group? Cause I hadn't heard from them recently. So I did a little look into them and, and called the director, found the, their number. And apparently, they're kind of struggling at the moment. They uh.
What's her name?
So Loved. So you know them? Yeah, they're really good. They do, like, they're doing job training there. And especially now, you have a lot of people doing side work with Etsy and other things, like it's a valuable skill to be taught.
And what they also teach helps you get jobs over in Elkhart.
Through some of.
Cause it, it's not just like the sewing machine I have at home.
No, it's industrial.
It's industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a good program.
So, but they're kind of struggling right now because they lost a lot of their donor groups during COVID and they've kind of been trying to find a. Re- retrenched themselves. So I suggested they put a proposal together for us. Cause again, we deal with poverty issues. We wanna support people who are, you know, getting skills and helping themselves. Uh so I'm gonna talk with the director again and they were gonna put together some proposals to maybe finance some of their trainers for a little bit. To help take the pressure off.
Right.
While they work. And I just think that would be a great thing for us to invest in.
And I, you know, tell them in their proposal, make sure they talk about. Like how they're training people and who's gone, and they've had people go to Elkhart.
Yeah, how it helps them get jobs.
Yeah.
Earn income.
Cause somebody might think, oh, it's just like making hats on the side or whatever.
Yeah, no, I mean, they, they did thousands for the campaign as I realize. Um so also, that's a good group. If y'all are looking for anything for pure stuff, you know, like, they do. They do a wide variety of things, so. Um but I was gonna get a proposal from them and see if it was something reasonable that we could help out with.
What I had was make. What I had was, make sure we contact the Salvation Army because they maintain a printed list. Okay, uh, food pantries.
Yep, and we, we got that.
Okay, and the second thing is.
Hearing from other food pantries that want to support ours also.
And the other thing is, we need to make guidelines for who can use our pantry.
Yeah, we're, well, we're not, we're not there yet and so that's like what we're working on. Good point.
Cause you will get people all the way from.
No, no, well, we're starting with requiring a Portage Township resident. And collecting a basic info, but there's no application process per se, but we want to collect household size, name, age, uh, address. Income, but it's gonna be like a short sheet at the, at the door and then we haven't decided how often they can come. We're gonna start, they've decided to start with Tuesdays, being open Tuesdays because all the other food pantries, none of them are open Tuesdays, so we thought we'd fill that for now. And then the idea is see what it can grow into.
And you know, uh, some of that would think about not to cut you off for a quick play. Like, if people were making donations, they're closed. The building's closed. Right, so when you close at, what, four thirty? And somebody come on, say, a Monday, and they'd be like, oh, I got all this stuff. I want to drop off.
Our flyer has the hours to drop off, but.
Here's the one thing though, and I always think it's unfair. I hate to do this, but we need to be open one night a week.
Well, we, we would like to move into that for sure.
Okay, because.
Well, weekend too.
Because I know people who work, right? And there's only a few, uh, Catholic charities and. Little Flower are the only ones I know of that are open one night a week, once a month.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent Cheryl, that's, I mean, the goal would be to open, be open like forty hours a week, you know, I mean, like a true drop in situation.
The other thing I was gonna suggest is we get the applications and I'd be happy to go around and get them. Of the pantries that have you fill out something, like I know Saint Vincent does. And our pantry is through Saint Vincent. We, we, we're, we're the west side of town we're responsible for. Just to see what information they ask for.
Oh, yeah, we've got that. We've, Northern India Food Bank, we have, we've absolutely got all that. And they, cause they have specific requirements too, um, on who they partner with and stuff. So, yeah, we definitely have that. We just haven't nailed down our policy except to say. We're thinking we start with Tuesdays and then we've been. But I feel like probably not gonna turn people away.
You know, I mean, it's a poop pit.
It'll be, it.
You gonna get. Mr. Walker, Osceola, heck, you'll get some people from up in Niles.
We thought we were just gonna, you know how we are, just build the ship as we go, like a little, see how it goes, you know, but I agree. Well, I'll lay out those policies, but if you want to meet with us too, Jamie, I mean.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of things that we should have on like the wishlist, right? And then build toward them.
There's a big vision up here, yeah, but like, definitely starting.
Cause I'm telling you, you are going, there are people who start off, right?
Even though, even what to hand down.
Every day, every day they go to a different food pantry, cause most of them have, like, I know at church. You know, if you're one, first of all, they're only trying to give you enough food for three days. And church will have, this is what you get if you're a um, a one-person family. It's what you get if you're a two to three person, and we need that.
Yeah, yep, a hundred percent. We're not there, but we know that by April, that's what we need.
Oh, yeah, cause I'm telling you, they're gonna be standing outside the door.
Well, that actually brings up another thing that I had mentioned before, uh, is I know Food Not Bombs. Is looking at different locations where they could provide like breakfast service and such to homeless and others. Um, and I had mentioned like, I mean, this is people that we're working with, so. If they can use the parking lot here, that might be an option. Like, we gotta look into it a little more, cause I don't know them that well. Um, but they currently do that at Our Lady of the Road, so they're looking at some other places as well.
Yeah, cause I know you emailed me back and you're talking with the cultivated, that's their name, people.
Yeah, right now, we're already, I mean, we're, we're ordering food from them right now, as we, as it stands. So we're already, we're already got that going for sure.
Well, I'm excited about it.
All I got for the agenda here.
Anything else?
Guys want to adjourn?
Oh, I know, I do. We need to have a presence on next door. I'm not sure.
For a while, I was pretty good about posting on there. I need to get back.
Some stuff on there lately about county council meetings. Today, someone posted a, here's all the public meetings coming up. And we were on there, like, all the county councils.
That would be part of this marketing person for sure.
I, I just know that. There have been about two, three people that I told of, you know. Other food pantries who are, you know, kind of new to being poor.
No, I'll get on there for sure.
I mean, in general, it's a good place for us to be posting some stuff. But we do have to be careful because there's a lot of trolls on there.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, and y'all are gonna get.